I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, reading and approval of the minutes, please. The July 13th, July 16th, July 24th?
Motion to approve and suspend.
Thank you. Motion by Wolf. Selecting by hack, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve is presented.
Okay. Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. Five eight. 2018 Street Project. Luke, I'll let you, let you start if you, if you have anything you want to add or talk about the meeting they had this morning, I guess.
And I guess, just a quick overview, they finished, finished the paving. They've got curb gutter work done. Their contractor that's doing the concrete work is going to be gone this week. Still a little unclear whether they're going to be back by the end of the week or whether it'll be next week before they come back. So things are going to be sitting there looking like there's not much going on for a little while. They got a few guys in cleaning up, that type of thing. They'll be back next week, do concrete work. And so bike path and sidewalk ramps and that type of thing, they'll be just working on that. And then get towards the middle of August and they'll get that stuff cleaned up. They'll be looking at starting to get in and get the seed and sod restoration, the seeding restoration done. And it sounds like it'll be somewhere in the first couple of weeks of September. That'll be after Labor Day, they'll be doing, they'll be starting to crack seal and chip seal. So at this point, they still expect to be done by September 15th or pretty close to that. So that's the status right now. We did have a meeting this morning with them to discuss some of the, some of the paving patches that we ended up doing. The discussion centered around the fact that there was a number of patches in some of these streets and the streets had been left open for, I think, longer than what the city anticipated, longer than we had anticipated. There are some contractual requirements that they haven't paid within a certain period of time. When they approached us about the process that they wanted to go through, that would have, the process they had would have left those roads open. It was going to leave them open a little bit longer. To the extent that they did, I don't think was clear. And right now, the discussion is basically centering on whether or not they're leaving those roads open had any impact on how much patching had to be done on which roads. And that's still being discussed. I think we're probably going to end up having another meeting. They're going to go back and look at, look at some things. I didn't get a sense that they were in a big hurry, and Jerry, you could probably, I think, it didn't seem like they were in a big hurry to acknowledge any real significant responsibility for any damage that may or may not have occurred in that time period that they left the roads open. So there's still discussions we have.
This, we were given this this morning by Josh, and it breaks down all the patches on what streets, all the yardage, the dates, the times, the days that the asphalt was taken off and when it was finally milled up. There were 75 patches around town that they did, which is quite extensive. I didn't think there were that many when, before the meeting. 5,000 tons was the overrun used of the original patch, or asphalt, tonnage was supposed to be 36,000 tons. And they went 5,000 over that. And 2,000 of it was just for patching, that's 6% of the project, basically. So we, you guys will want copies, you can either look them up or Nancy's, or we can get you more copies too if you want. Now, we, we had quite a meeting this morning, and hopefully, hopefully it doesn't go beyond negotiations that we can do back and forth between us and Luke and Mayo. We don't have to involve Pat further on those discussions, but you know what? I guess that's, I guess it's prerogative if you want to go there or not. When you're caught between the engineers and the contractors, and they, they know the link, oh, they do this day in and day out. You kind of feel, not maybe, Nancy telling from around, but you kind of feel like you have to believe both sides almost because you don't know, you don't, don't know the difference. We're not there every day. So you trust that you're getting represented by both sides equally and, and, but it was, I don't, I don't know where to draw the line or where to say, well, there's $277,000 over the budget. And this, all this stuff here is pretty much that, correct?
Yeah, that $277,000 is the total cost of all the patching. I think it was the sun-stabilized base, other things like, there's a lot of stuff that go into that number.
Yep.
One thing, a couple of things maybe just to point out for everybody when they're looking at some of this stuff is that the majority of the patching work really was on just a few streets. You had a number of streets that we either didn't patch at all, or that there was only one or two for fairly insignificant, fairly low amounts of money. Then there was a few streets that we had a lot of patches on, or maybe a couple of very big patches. So really, the thing to keep in mind is that a lot of what was happening was on a few areas. It wasn't a widespread, we had patches all over town. It was really, we had a lot of patches on a few streets. So the kind of patches that we saw on some of those other streets are well within what I would have expected. You know, in my experience, you have some, you expect to have some, and we did indeed have some. But there was a couple of streets, probably three or four primarily, that we had really significant patching on. And those, I think, are the ones that you kind of ask yourself, okay, why? What, so when we did this, what was the, what was the impact on the city? What was the benefit to the city? What did, you know, what were the changes that were made? You know, if somebody's looking to spread blame, there's blame to be spread. You can, you can point at a lot of different things. You could look at it from the standpoint of, had we been more conservative, had you been more conservative even in what we decided to do way up front? There was, when the decisions to do some overlays on things, or to do a four-inch mill versus a full reconstruct, or those types of things, we had conversations. It's, it's, really boils down to a question of the, the assumption of risk. And how much are you willing to risk having some things that didn't quite go right versus, I just want to have it be completely, you know, not, it'd be exactly what I said. And we decided to go down the road of trying to get away with, that's not maybe a good way to put it. We decided to go down the road of making the assumption that we would have more things go right than would go wrong. And we had more things go right than what went wrong. So had we made different choices, for example, Deopolis and Divide as an example. Had we decided to completely reconstruct those streets like we did pretty much all of the rest of the streets in that neighborhood, the cost probably will, the entire project probably would have ended up, if you take that approach citywide, probably would have actually ended up higher than what you're going to end up spending anyway. So there's a certain point of view that you can look at and say, okay, in the, in the whole, a couple of things. We had some problem areas, but on a whole, we actually got away better than what we would have if we'd have been much more conservative. It's simply a point of view. I'm not saying that that's the right way to look at it, but I wanted to point it out as, as, as a way to consider really everything as a whole. This contractor has been good to work with. The, the question boils down to whether or not them leaving those streets open had an impact on how much had to be patched, and whether or not, how much responsibility they have. That, to me, is what the question is. And I don't know that we've gotten to the bottom of that yet. As, as I kind of would have expected, they didn't necessarily stand right up and say, oh, sure, we'll take on that responsibility completely. You don't really expect them to. At the same time, you know, it's up to you as a council to decide whether or not they're being reasonable on their approach and whether or not the assumptions of risk that everybody took is reasonable.
So there's no action to be taken on, on this tonight, but just sort of bringing up the speed on that one. The next meeting, I think we requested that Mayo come in and talk to us and kind of explain to the rest of the, the foreword what Nancy and I kind of heard today. I did talk to Trevor from Mayo today, who was here this morning. He told me we probably want to have that done, just so they can hear from him.
I think we will have a ASW in the next council meeting as well.
Yeah, so a big one.
Yeah, it'll be a very substantial one.
Yep. So I'll have this, if you guys want to see it, or if you want a copy, that's fine. The other, anything else, Luke, you want to bring up?
I have nothing else.
Okay. The other thing with, with Mayo that we discussed, and you all have got a copy right here, is the crushing of the existing concrete, asphalt, and millings, all the mix out there. Everything is laying out there, so. What we, what they're, what they're estimating right now is there's 14,000 yards of asphalt and then 4,000 yards of concrete. At a price of 147,000. So they're, so basically, if we crush it, and these are the, if these are the numbers, you know, we're getting it for $14.70 a ton, basically is what we're getting that, that mix worth. And we, we turn around and either use it ourselves, or sell it for $25 a ton. I think it would be part of this project, it'll all be built into the same thing. So I think it's something we need to do. First of all, we've got a lot of stuff sitting out there that needs to get, it's unusable to us right now. This, the timeline of this would be this fall sometime. He didn't say exactly when, depending on when they get, get in here. So this includes mobilization and crushing, blending, stockpiling. And stockpile would be, you know, Dave would be the one that would kind of coordinate where, where we have it moved to, but.
It's going hard to move it back over, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I, what's, way back there as far east as that pile is, that's pretty soft back there. We want to move it closer up. It does have to be exactly as far out as the other pile was, but somewhat. And maybe more down in the flat area than up on the hillside, a little bit. Dave figured that out, and you know, we still have fencing to put onto, and we may not get to that this fall either, depending on when they do the fresh, I just don't want to put the fence up first, we'll just, we'll destroy it, but. You'll notice that where it says notes, it says final quantities will be verified by their drone, a drone survey when completed. So these numbers may not be exact. They did add maybe 2,000 yards of concrete with the stuff that they took out of the bike path. That's, that wasn't included in this, so. And who knows what else? The other, 10 of the other contractors are going to throw on that pile this fall, if anything, so. We can take action on this now and get it lined up, or wait for the next meeting, it's up to you guys. So what are your guys' thoughts, Casey?
So then we would, we would then not make charges. I think it's a special, special assessment.
To this, the, this is the project we're doing now, yeah.
I'm just worried about all the other things that we kind of, like, cacked on, we're already over budget.
We are, we are over budget. You're right. We're over the budget on our last budget estimate. On the first budget estimate, we're still way under, but you're, you're right.
This was included?
No, 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 I didn't think it was, no. I guess, is that, or you'll try to buy it down some with sales tax money, or the whole thing? I don't know. But it's one of those things where we have products sitting there that's unusable. It's product that we can use, and if we sell, we'll make money off of it too. So I, I think it's a good thing to do, but how we go about doing it, you're right. Is, is this, is this where we want to put in this project, or we want to do it separate?
Yeah, I always thought if we're going to turn around and resell it, you know, I don't think we should charge it, you know, as, as a special. Buster, help make money off of it.
Right.
I personally, if we knew this, try and buy it down with the sales tax dollars and the home bridge, whatever we determine, and a ramp on the mail for the project. I don't want to, yeah, we'll get that if you will. I want to see if done that or.
Okay. You know, this, this is another way to just capture where all our, all our, our old waste recycle went to, you know, rich streets or whatever, and then, and then that would be charged, you know, this, yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, it'd be everything.
Well, I think you would probably, almost all of that was used in places where we did the reconstr.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of it was used in other areas, but it's battering here and there.
Gall, fifth, fifth took a lot.
Yeah, if you're talking about the, the crushing concrete though, have we even used, yeah, gall, gall took some. Well, I mean, pretty much everything is in red.
It is in red, yeah.
That's where, that's where they went. So it wouldn't be too tough to, pretty, pretty reasonably get down, you know, for those quantities.
And they ran out about a week and a half ago, so. Because they started using a little bit for some, just filling areas up, other than just the, the, the full reconstruct, so. 90, 95% of it went on the reconstruct, so.
Yeah, but they didn't use the reconstruct, it's a pretty small quantity.
Yeah. Great, Jerry.
Just that if you have a volume of offset that went into the project and what's left over, that'd be easy to do on a, a special assessment. But future amount would be difficult because you couldn't claim benefit to anybody's property in particular for that.
Gotcha. Okay, well, let's, let's try to figure that out by the next meeting, how we can take that down. Mark, do your thoughts.
All right. Let's move on. I have a couple questions about this project. Last meeting, when we talked about on the bike path, you know, my concrete, well, it was split down the center, and then like mail, mail in, just to do a demonstration on one slab. I was like, I find it back together, and I guess like epoxy, I was curious, whatever.
There was, there's a couple of things that ended up coming into play. The primary one was that, that the contractor who's doing, the concrete subcontractor had an objection to them taking large quantities out. So that was the primary driving force. And in the end, really, it came down to, no, let's stick with the original plan. There's nothing wrong with the original plan. And the second part of it was that we weren't convinced there would be a major savings. By the time we went through and looked at how much is this, how much of that we could do versus how much we still had replaced, and it became, you know, there isn't really necessarily a lot of dollars here to be saved. I think it's something that could be considered for some repair work on other bike paths around town. We asked them to do that work, kind of got caught a little bit, you know, just to do that demonstration, to see, to evaluate it from that standpoint. But I honestly think that contractor lost interest a little bit, and decided maybe in their own mind it wasn't that big a deal. And kind of had bigger fish to fry. And so they didn't, they didn't really get proactive into that. We never really pushed them to go do it. When it became apparent that it was nothing more than a demonstration project or something that you may or may not do later, so.
Okay. And then on the third street northwest, it's by the dyke, you know, the old dyke there? I know a resident asked me from the stop sign, they saw it got moved more, more on the west. And that's why they have moved there.
No, that wasn't more.
It wasn't, no.
No, I'm not aware of that, no.
We, I, that's something that myself, and I talked to Jason, and with Officer Wolf, and we've got this track down there, and, and see if it does a more effective job at the park, where there's more kids, more traffic, and down by Steve Roberg's house, it was, Jim says totally ineffective down there. It was an issue, so we've tried down there.
I'm assuming he was up with Dan.
Yeah, yeah.
I know you mentioned to me, Dan was probably more in detail more.
Buster?
It's good having it there. It's made quite a difference. At least you know what you're supposed to do when you get to that street now. Before, people never do, who was supposed to be doing what. So I think it was a very good.
We'll see. I know a resident wanted, one of the old ones in place too, so the speed first, or higher, but. And then, and then on that street, there's the drainage, I guess, you know. He was playing in that, ever since the curb work is done, that's, it's, you know, drained in a different way. Yeah.
Is it draining differently?
I didn't get a chance to look. And I noticed one thing, you know, in that, in that grass, I guess, like ditch, it's right beside the dyke, you know, and it's up high again, forward, it's a little bit sandy.
Yeah, we haven't got a chance to get in there and dig it out yet, and we did.
So it's the south of the road, south, third, yeah, okay. Well, we need to get that addressed before spring.
With all the utilities, very dear, I don't know how much dredging or digging down like I can do. I think there's fiber there and views in that ditch, you know, whether they, very dear utilities off the original bottom of the ditch, or if they've gone off the level of what's, and some of that could be either shallow or big. Goes in there and starts skimming.
Well, it's something that we should, one, call it, and then figure that out before we start.
Yes, you'd think we should go down a few, a few inches.
Where, where exactly is this at?
Where the drink is?
Yeah, okay.
On the west side of the bank.
How much of that did we disturb as part of the project though?
Due to the curb on the wheel and the whole, like.
Right.
North side of that street, you know.
Yeah, I remember that chunk, east of that, that area, that curb was in really bad shape. So we did quite a bit of stuff there. What are you saying, is, is he saying the curb drains differently now?
Yeah, it's draining.
Well, that's not, that's not, it didn't drain more.
You were saying that it's not going, going, going across the street now anymore, you know, it's not going. Oh, south, it's staying on the north side. You know, but then, it should be, let me put a count west, the link goes like south, but I didn't get a chance to see it.
I didn't, you know, that last rain we got, Casey, I didn't drive down there either. I wonder if it's draining properly now, and he's just so used to it going south. Oh, I don't know.
Because we didn't replace the, that valley gutter, at the, at the end, but we did replace much of that curb on the north side, and I think it takes it west.
So it's supposed to come here and then down there?
No, it's not.
Here? Through the, through the ditch, yeah.
Where's that drainage bolt eventually, it's down, down the road?
The drainage here?
Yeah.
Goes underneath and then down?
Down the road.
Down to the night river.
Down and back to the river, that way, okay.
Well, let's take a look at that.
Yeah.
I was trying to go there and see what we were gonna do. I don't remember when I drove around this morning when I got to town, I don't remember there being any river bass or anything. Were there, is it draining? So, what am I there to do? I didn't see any water sitting there.
This morning? You had a good shot last night, though.
Yeah.
Anything else, Casey?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, 6A, free reduce hall rent for Whole Country Community Health Center. Looks like they are having. That's here.
The city law is just a backup and case of things, but.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion by Wolf. Second by Hack, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. He's a preschool, counter, raffle permit.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Hack. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. All right, 6C, ordinance enforcement, Mike Quinn.
I, uh, take out major things I'd like to go over. But I'd like to start out with saying, maybe some good news. I drove through the north part of town here, seemed to be like they're making progress. Grass seems to be cut, things seem to be generally cleaner. But the main reason I went up there was, Kid Governor named Rich Charlie Johnson lives up there now, and he was in one of these places, it was a mess. And I personally told him, I said, you need to clean up your yard, you need to straighten that place up. And I saw him today, and he said he did, and I didn't believe him. And I went up and lo and behold, they made quite a few improvements. I guess the point is, it was simply a matter of asking him to do it, okay? And that's kind of the point I'd like to bring up here, is, and I've said to you guys before, the city probably looks about as good as it does, but the streets paying, making all these improvements. Going through all this stuff to make things into a nice place, and it's great to see these improvements, okay? You have people here in the park, you have wonderful people trying to make the city better. And then you have this other group who doesn't give a damn, and making the city worse, okay? Now, if you make the city better, it means every house in the city is worth more, which means you can assess it for more, which means you get more tax dollars, which means you can pay to more streets, okay? So cleaner, nicer city, higher values, higher taxes, fewer financial costs. It's that simple, okay? Now, to get there, what do you do? You enforce the ordinances, okay? I came in here five years ago, five years ago, and started asking for these ordinances to be forced. And I think five years is a long time. Five years ago, that school bus that's sitting down here on the boulevard, it's still here, five years later. Five years, the junkers are still up here, they're all over the place, okay? So, well, some, some of the people responded, and I think the new city planner is putting some heat on these people. But my question is, is. But my question is, and I don't get this, I'm trying to sell my house, okay? Why, why do you people whose job is to enforce these ordinances, okay? Somebody comes down my street and sees three jumpers, okay, on my street. Now, I'm supposed to sell them my house, and I'm supposed to take less for my house? Because each one of you refuses to do what you were elected to do. You were elected to enforce these ordinances. I don't expect perfection, but I expect more than waiting five years, okay? Now, people up the street have, one guy's got his car that's been sitting there for three or four years on the boulevard. The other people have just added a new truck there.
Does it matter if it's on the boulevard or not, Mike? Pardon, what if it was on the street? Would it matter if it was on the street versus the boulevard where there's no sidewalk and no blocking? Does that matter to you, or is it?
It's, there is not, the ordinance is saying.
I know the ordinance said, but I'm, I'm asking you though.
I'm saying get him off the street, get him out of sight, okay?
If it was his work car, he drives it every day, it's.
That's fine.
You still wouldn't like the car, correct?
If he, if he has a licensed car he's driving to work, that's his privilege, okay? And the ordinances do not prohibit you from having a licensed car to drive to work. The ordinances do have, prohibit you from putting three junk trucks on your property. They, the ordinance says you can't store unlicensed junk vehicles on your property, okay? I understand everybody has to get to work. But what I don't understand, and I wish any one of you would have the courage to tell me, why you do not direct the, the police? Call the wrecking company, go get these vehicles and haul them up to the city dump, okay? Now, this is what you were elected to do, and the people who have those cars, you can give them all the warnings you want. But I, I want a human being sitting here to tell me what it is that's stopping you from doing this. What is it? Why do you favor this guy who violates the ordinance and is going to cost me several thousand dollars on the price of my house? Explain that to me, that's all I want to hear.
Firstly, you don't know it's going to cost you seven thousand dollars, Mike. You don't know that.
Okay.
We don't know that either.
Well, I don't.
We understand your transgressions.
Okay, well, if somebody drives down my street and sees junk cars lining the street? And you have the audacity to tell me they're going to say it's just as good as if they weren't there?
I don't have any audacity, Mike.
You just did.
However, we are at our last meeting, we just, we just did make a point to talk about, we need, we have some ordinances that are outdated. We have some things that we need to clean up. We have probably a half a dozen hot button ordinance topics, this being one of them, that needs to be addressed and changed. And brought up to current verbiage, um, current, you know, may, maybe, just, they need to be fixed. You may not think the ordinance needs to be fixed, but the way we go about it, the ordinance needs to be fixed. And I, I agree with you.
Yeah, I was in here over three years ago, okay? I brought a model ordinance in here. And I don't, I understand your dilemma, you don't, you have everybody to make happy, okay? So you're going to choose who you make happy and who you don't make happy, okay? And I don't see why you take sides with the worst possible people who are costing you money, okay?
Who says we're taking sides, Mike? Where do you hear that from?
From me, because you, you, and you are not taking my side and enforcing the ordinances. You're taking the side of the people with the jumpers sitting on my street and the other streets in this town. You have a choice, and I don't understand why you're siding with them and not siding with me. I pay more taxes than they do, and I'm willing to pay more taxes than they do. Why, give me an explanation why you would not call the police and say, go get those cars.
We can't, can't give you an answer, Mike, that's going to make any sense to you or make you happy tonight.
So, well, can you give me an answer? You're up, Commissioner.
Well, I'm all on board, Mike, you know, I mean, I think we should call all these, all these ordinances, you know, I mean, you know.
Well, he can't give me an answer, can you give me an answer?
I agree that it needs to be cleaned up, but it, it takes time, there's pros and cons to do it. No, it doesn't, but we can't do it all at one time. We can't get everybody in town and say, and we can't just say, let's clean up Mike's neighborhood because he wants to sell his house. So then now my brother calls and says, I want to sell my house, come to my neighborhood and clean it up. Well, then we got to go to his neighborhood, that does, it doesn't work that way. The police are putting out letters, the city's putting out letters, we're trying to clean it up, there are some getting cleaned up. Might not be the ones you want, but there are some getting cleaned up.
I do see progress, I can attest.
And it's slow, it took twenty, twenty-five years to make it the way it looks it does now. We weren't here doing this job twenty-five years ago.
I'll say one final thing, you know, to get out of here, is let's at least hold the line, okay? And by that, I mean, first, Steve Goan is a good guy, and he's not a law for this town. But Steve now has taken a variety of junk vehicles and parked them out along Highway two hundred, okay? Now, one thing I notice when I drive through every town in North Dakota, you get that feeling, it's a nice town, it isn't a nice town. I, all I'm asking for people is, you don't have to harass them, just ask people, say, Steve, is there anywhere else you can put that junk? Now, right beside me, Steve's, I don't know if he still owns the property or not. He bought the property across the creek, okay? It's been a nice piece of property, it's been cleaned. Now, are you guys going to allow some obnoxious business to come in there now?
What's a, my, my?
I was thinking, no problem. Dave Nielsen, who worked for the highway department, when that highway was put in. He went to great lengths to leave that oxbow in the creek as a wildlife area. It cost the state a lot of money to preserve that area, and it's been a very nice area with a nice wildlife area, okay? You have the potential with that little area, make it a restaurant, make it a little park, make it a hundred things, okay? But you go in there and make it a used car lot, make it some, uh, a bar, make it all this other stuff. You're going to devalue everything, okay? And these, these decisions, I, I remember when they cut down the trees out here by Longchamp's. And that, and that looked nice, and it was kind of a guy came in there and said he couldn't do any business because those trees were there. So you cut the trees down, and they had, somebody had to come in here and fight to keep from that, from that bus thing over here by the library. But if you can't go forward, I'm saying, think about holding the line, okay? Don't let somebody take a decent area that we've worked for years to preserve? And then go out there and say, I'm going to start creating a junkyard. But part of the thing, the guy up the street with me, he has three wreck trucks. He, he has a total usually about ten vehicles on his property. And I, I don't know what his intention is, but he shouldn't be running a business of fixing up junk cars there, okay? It is simply, I just plain don't get it. Part of it is, two that you guys need to think about, it's always been the case, you're competing with Beulah. Somebody has to decide, am I going to live in Beulah or am I going to live in Hazen? When I moved here in nineteen seventy-six, I chose Hazen over Beulah because it had a beautiful, Hazen had a nice main street when I came here. Hazen was the nicest town, and I chose it because it looked like a well-run, clean town. I could have gone to Stan and I could have gone to Beulah.
So you're saying our main street is a nice town, Mike? That's what I'm hearing, I didn't.
No, you're not hearing that, your main, it's still.
That's what I'm hearing.
No, well, you're, you better get your ears cleaned, because it's still one of the nicest main streets around. I think it is the nicest main street, that's what you're hearing. Did you hear that?
Now I, now I heard that.
Okay, you heard it. Hazen has always had, of Stan and Beulah, Hazen has always had the best main street. Okay, you've got that. But I'm saying Hazen has to have the best side streets, they have to have the best trailer courts, they have to have the best of everything if we're going to compete in the market, okay? And I, I should not be asked to take, to have the value of my house, whether it's ten cents or ten thousand dollars. Because I do not want you guys past the courage to step up to the plate, get ahold of the police and say, this has gone on long enough. Get a tow drop, tow that car out to the dump, now put the bag.
You got three more seconds.
I'm going, okay, I'm done, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, quit taking it out of my pocket, and, okay? And come up, answer these damn questions for me, and write it down, send me an answer, just, you're just. Each of you, send me a letter and say, go to hell, I don't care, okay? Thanks for taking the time, any more seconds?
We're done.
Thanks.
You can skip over eight A, sometimes there isn't here, but you never did hear that from them.
Okay, we'll skip eight A. Uh, go down to reports, water sewer. Okay, streets, cemetery.
I've got a few things, but I want to have Dave come up. Or if you've got them there. Does anybody have copies of these markings?
Yeah.
I want to object, uh, pricing on taking the, the box off of that diesel one ton pickup and putting a flatbed on.
Oh, you don't, you don't have copies of that stuff?
That flatbed we don't have.
No.
I'll pass them around.
I got a price on a, a steel flatbed and one on a aluminum. And, uh. Here, pass it down, all the prices are on there, aluminum bed is a little bit higher. Um, I would lean more towards the aluminum bed, uh, just for rust reasons, when you put sand around the steel bed, like on the other ton we had, it started to rust. Uh, aluminum should stand up a little bit better to the salt. The total on the aluminum bed is two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, the steel bed was two thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-six cents. That subtracted off the sales tax that they had figured out on that.
And there's one thing I didn't ask you, Dave, how long are the prices going forward? Do they have a long end?
They have a long end, I believe it's a while, they have a little inventory they have on hand.
Thoughts?
So then the bed on the red one then? Can't take that one?
That's pretty rusty, that one's pretty rough shape, and even on the other white ones, I just start to rust through. On that two thousand and six.
Probably after the oh-six, we're probably going to have to do some work within the next.
Probably next year, we'll have to have the floor patched in on that one, that red one. I, probably the year difference from that to this red diesel, I wonder if the frame would maybe be shaped different, or probably wouldn't fit. But it, it's in pretty rusty, rusty shape for the repair work on it before. But it would make this tonner a lot easier to use, probably show the side of that pickup box and. Flatbed would be, would be way handier.
I would like to see this happen, but I understand that, you know. Dave's just looking at, you know. We're, we're starting to use that, or we're doing more, but, um.
Yeah, we pretty much park that random, we don't use that very much at all anymore, it's just not very safe.
I don't know if we, we, you look at the current oh-six that we have the steel bed on. Uh, what kind of element are we going to put into that to replace him? Bad or rusty?
Will this be an issue of pulling that back? Jetting back trailer or anything?
No, I would have the same receiver hitch on the back and everything.
So then on the sander then? Would that go, go in the back of a, back of a box, you know?
That would go back on that diesel, and like, if they need to pull that jitter in the middle of the winter, we just pull the sander off. It only takes like ten, fifteen minutes to lift it off.
But I mean, a sander though, doesn't, uh, like need to have like a flatbed, right?
No, no, it will fit in the pickup box, we have it in there this winter, but. It's just for when we use it for trimming trees or anything else. They're so tall, you, you know, you can't reach over the size of that box, and on a flatbed, I mean, it's great. That's right handy, that gives you a more usable space, makes it wider.
Yeah, I don't know if you saw the pictures, we're back. Monty, what do we, what do we have for funds for?
We definitely still have just a quarter fifty thousand dollars contributed from here.
Then we're, we're looking at possibly using that for.
We have twenty-seven thousand for pickup.
I believe us, let's just say twenty. Twenty thousand.
You're about thirty thousand.
At thirty, twenty-five. What else do you got here, David, that you want?
I was looking, um, possibly getting like a tire changer from the shop. We're going to fix our longboard tires, we got a flat tire, I got longboard pickups or all the vehicles, um. I got prices from NAPA, their best deal was if you bought a combination, bought a tighter balancer and a tire changer. The combination was five thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Really don't need a balancer, um, I got a price from the other, that I got. Not a price for both, but just a tire changer alone was one thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, good random.
That's all we're looking at possibly.
Yeah, I don't think we need the, the balancer, I just got the price from the world, being absolutely NAPA.
Yeah, that would, we have a need for a balancer.
Not at this time, no, just mainly to fix longboard tires or pick up tires or.
I mean, the time, the times that we went up the interstate in town, fixed the tire. That may or may not turn into a order depending on who may, it may not take it up.
That'll spend the, spend time, we drop the tire off in the morning and it'll be ready for you the next day. So you might have a longboard on or a pickup on or.
So we're looking at seventeen spreader.
Seventeen ninety-five.
For the, for the actual tire changer. That's all we had, correct, David?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, go with the tire changer for seventeen ninety-five. And I'd like to also make a motion to purchase this aluminum bed. Thirty-eight oh-one forty.
This would be thirty-five seventy-eight eighteen if you take the sales tax off.
Okay. Thirty-five seventy-eight.
Okay, the motion by hack.
Second.
Second by a little discussion.
How about a tire, I guess, spreader?
That's for spreading, if you want to do, uh, you know, patch a tire or whatever. If you want to add that in, that's a small item, I thought I got to do that anytime, or if you want to put that in. Tire spreader is two hundred and sixty dollars.
That's probably a necessity if we need to patch, huh? Not necessarily.
It's not necess, it makes it easier, I mean, it's not a hundred percent necessary, but it makes it easier.
It make it easier.
I mean, it's two hundred and sixty bucks.
And safer, probably.
Is that, is that all tire spreader, is there anything else on that front that I missed, sorry?
Yeah, I should do that, uh, small tire adapter, that makes it, do the real small.
Okay.
Longboard tires or whatever. That's two thirteen ninety-eight.
Okay, Monty, how do we need to do this? Make another motion? Yeah, otherwise we have to reset. Uh, yeah. I'll just make another motion, well, we got, we need to act on the first one.
Better motion to amend your first one to include that.
Make a motion to amend.
Do we have, how do we need to go by it, since we got a second?
We just can amend.
Just amend it?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to that amend the first motion. And go back to the tire. Oh, the tire changer, I'd like to add that with the small tire adapter for two thirteen ninety-eight and tire spreader for two sixty. I don't know what that total is, but I'd like to purchase those two areas. Just that, just the tire.
And the trailer, and the, and the flatbed.
And the flatbed, yes.
Okay, we have a motion by hack. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye.
We're going to do the motion as amended.
Let's vote on the amendment.
Okay. So we have, we already have a motion.
We have, we have an amended motion now to purchase the tire changer, the tire spreader, the small wheel adapter and the aluminum flatbed.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought that's what we just did, my fault. So we need a, a, a new motion for that. We already got it, so yeah.
We need it amended.
Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern. Aye. Over and out.
Aye, motion carried. If I just totally messed all that up, I think we still got the point across.
Yeah, we, we needed amended.
Okay.
And, uh, that it is? That's all that I have?
Okay, finance pressing?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Dan's not here. HCD, Buster?
Hey, we have a lieutenant over at my hair, so that's a good deal.
Good.
Just moved in. Uh, this, I think we probably started by Friday and we leave and whatever. So that's, that's good to see. We did, ran some numbers on estimated costs of the demonstration project that we did using the in-kind service that we got from the city staff. And that project itself came in pretty close to four thousand dollars in wrong figures. Totally figured everything in there. And most of that, of course, would have been those in-kind service costs for the help that we got from the city employees, you know. So that was a, I mean, and that was, uh, the big, tremendous help with that project. So the project itself will, will stay active yet for, we're looking at, I believe it was the sixteenth of, of, uh, August that will dismantle it. And when I say dismantle it, basically what it's going, what's going to happen is the delineator bolts will come down. And that's about it. You know, the paint and stuff will stay up till they do the chip seal and, uh, whatever. So. I've had a couple people stop in, visited me on, uh, bike lanes, uh, not real. A couple of bike riders are not real. Have on, not especially on the south side. Figure that it might get dinged by somebody over in a car or something. Probably not as bad on it. Uh, I said this, yeah, on the, on the north side, probably not as concerned on the hard side as it would be on the south side. So we'll see. But, uh, I did check with, uh, I'm not sure what the gentleman's name, but with Darryl Burge, I know through him, the hospital to see if his drone operator could get me a couple of shots. Uh, but did he do it?
Yeah, you, you have an email too.
Okay, I didn't, I was out this afternoon, so I didn't see it. Uh, but, uh, wanted to, uh, get that, uh, probably forward that to the people from Alka who helped with the project. Uh, and, and DOT, just so that they would have a chance to look at it and see, see where things are at. So. Actually, you know, there's a, maybe this sounds like a biased comment on my part, but I thought that after the project was done, that it really kind of spruced up Main Street a little bit, you know, I mean, aesthetically. Uh, I really did. And, and so I guess, uh, you know, moving forward, once the project's over and whatever, it, it'll be in the city's hands, the commissioner's hands in terms of what they wanna do in the future or anything.
No, yeah, and will, will we get, so the DOT put a survey out too, or no? We got one, Monty did one?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. I know that.
There was a comment period, right?
Yeah, there was one published through Alka and DOT, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And I don't, Monty, did you do a separate one? Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
It'd be interesting to get those comments back when they would file that. Yeah, I, I get quite a few comments from people.
Yeah.
Good and bad, more, more bad, but whatever.
And you know, actually, uh, I know there's been a lot of probably more negative comments or virtually about the re- reverse parking, but you know, I actually think when you go by there, uh, it looks pretty, it looks pretty neat. In fact, further down the street, you see them sometimes that way. Back again to the hardware store and other places.
To load things, yeah.
And I will say this, uh, I wasn't as quick as probably our guest who was here, but I did have one of the Main Street business owners come down and talked about maybe going to see his lawyer about if we were into this franchise. Like, I thought I'd been quick enough, but I said, well, just keep walking and hang right. You can talk to Pat. His office is right there. So, I did, I was being kind.
Oh boy. Anything else, Buster?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right. Eleven A, survey monument proposal.
We had the proposal for more engineering a while back. Contacted Ken Link here in town. He and Jess Parker provided the proposal we had before you.
So maybe like part of this would also be paid for by the sale.
Yeah, we would still have to visit with the contractor involved monuments that were removed as part of the project, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately they moved quite a bit. There's one near the police station that they had right in the middle. They had it marked out. They had it cut out and then the mill, the was it the paper or the miller that they came by and wrecked, it's totally gone. You know, this is unbelievable. And a lot of things got marked, get marked after that one point. So how does this remind you of this, Monty, do you have what, uh, Ma- Moore's contract was, what the difference is?
Chair's drop numbers were between eighty and ten thousand.
Okay.
You know, obviously this would go up if we keep adding stuff, but then I'm assuming that's what goes a little bit.
When do you think we need to make that decision? We use Moore or? Or Ken?
Well, obviously if he could have put some, or even if they could have put some in that didn't have to go in the concrete, it's a lot easier. His, his estimate requires. Put them hundred dollars. Required to be set in the concrete. Once the concrete is in, it's a hundred dollars per monument. Where if he can set them in at first, he can put the PVC slided in there and then they can just pour the concrete and all that. I'm thinking they're gonna be catching up with.
Yeah, that's gonna be. Concrete's gonna be all done soon.
That concrete, a lot of that stuff's gonna be coming in and starting next week.
Yeah. I didn't notice in here to see when they would start, Monty, if they think of it too.
I'd say it would be starting by August fifteenth, I thought.
Yeah. What would the board like to do? Or even Luke, why, why would, why should we have you guys do it over something else?
You know, in this, in this instance, um, I don't know what, uh, you know, who you're talking about in the other. The other outfit. You got some surveyors here in town?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Were they substantially less than our price?
Almost half.
Okay, I mean, it does what it is.
Sure. Thoughts from the board? We should make a decision. It's something that we, they need to get going on either if it's Moore or Ken. Greg, they could, they could start it soon.
Move to have, uh, can't wait for that.
Can't wait. A motion by Stern?
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion.
So I guess like Ken is all, all, I have to dig down and search and stuff.
Yeah.
That was the only question I had.
So I don't know what Greg's, what his stuff is. So I think this will double check to make sure. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern, all right. Wolf.
Aye.
Kat.
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye. Motion carried. Two thousand nineteen preliminary budget. Monty?
Basically presenting virtually the same numbers that we started the process with. We did include those equipment purchases, checking out the new garbage truck. Uh, the tractor and more for the street department. I guess we included the higher numbers, so they're in the preliminary. We can still fine tune this before final approval in October. So long as we're adjusting our expenditures down and not requesting any additional tax dollars. So this is using basically the same millage as last year.
Okay, thoughts, Casey?
So then on the, on the, yes, for the water, water in this rates. You know, I said the base rate is, is at the twenty bucks, right?
We're at ten.
At ten, okay. And they said raise it up to.
Recommendation was to, to, to be in full compliance with the SRF, it was twenty-two dollars base rate. But that, that was still assuming three people in the department and we're still not certain how that's going to work out. So.
I need this like usage per like thousand, not over sixty or.
Well, I like, I think that's gonna have to be adjusted too because I'm sure Southwest is gonna go up again in November when they send out their notice. So we'll have to look at adjusting that as well. Even if it says twenty-five cents or a thousand, you know. Yeah.
So then the best plan is probably to get some January one?
Yeah, we, cause we, we have to do resolutions to change those. So we'll take a couple readings. If you have to make them effective January, one would be the best bet. And then hopefully we'll have a little better idea as far as what the actual expenditure will be for the next year with staff.
Any other thoughts? Thoughts?
I guess I don't see a it's a huge problem. It's like raising up the rates. I mean, yeah, I don't know, I don't know how long these, the base rate has been.
Basically, they've been since two thousand twelve. We haven't changed the rates since this Southwest water was started. So. Yeah, and there was a email going around the list sort of among the different cities recently. And our base, you know, including all of our garbage, all the base rates for garbage, water, sewer, everything. We are among the lowest of anybody that responded to that. There are some that have a base rate of eighty dollars a month before you, before you even start paying for water or sewer. Quantity with sewer.
Can you hear the pass from Monty? Preliminary budget?
I guess just a motion to go ahead and send it over to the county.
Motion by half.
Second.
Second, Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Kat.
Aye.
Stern, uh, Wolf.
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye. Carry, thank you. Twelve A, city measure. City, uh, sales tax cap. Well, as you all know that we've had with being a home rule charter, you know, that's part of the, the sales cap. Sales tax cap is part of the correct path. That's where it comes from. So anything over twenty-five dollars does not get sales tax. Is that correct?
Well, the maximum
Maximum sales tax.
Was just twenty-five dollars.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you buy a car at Hazen Motors, the maximum sales tax is twenty-five dollars with our cap that we have. So if we remove the cap, then then that changes.
The issue becomes for you can request that any amount over that twenty-five dollars be refunded through the state tax department. We've been in situations where the requests for refunds on the sales tax cap have far outweighed what we were receiving in sales tax. So there were several months we didn't receive sales tax money because it was paying back the refunds from previous times. It's just something.
And they can go back how many years?
I wanna say it's two years they can go back to request their refund.
You gotta be real careful how guess who can, uh, specifics?
I mean, if, if I go buy materials to build a garage and it's ten thousand dollars, I'm gonna easily be over the twenty-five dollar maximum cap. So I can go then fill a form out, send it into the state and they'll refund me everything over the twenty-five dollars without just by providing the proof. So then that comes back up what, what we're supposed to get the next month. So if you have a lot of those types of purchases, uh, major construction projects or anything like that. You know, if, if the, when the Pioneer Apartments went, I mean, all those materials, realistically, they, if they weren't tax exempt, they couldn't went back and ask for all of those tax dollars back.
How many months this year have we received?
Two months. We, well, we've received zero February, March, April, May, June.
No sales cap. And that's about thirty thousand?
Total, yeah, total is a little more than thirty, yeah, per month.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's split three weeks. For our, for our home loan charter.
That's a lot, that's a lot. Am I getting? So if we remove the cap, then this could change?
As far as?
Well, if we.
Effective April first. Any sales if we remove the cap, effective April first, the cap would be gone. There would be no refunds for anything over the twenty-five dollars.
That's just, that's, it's just a huge hit we're taking. I, I'm not, and it's gotta be voted by the, the public. And that's the one thing that it's like buying down our street project. We need that sales tax to do things like that. And it's I just, I just feel like we need to take this to a vote and have it to see if the community would support that. Obviously, I mean, it's gonna be taxed a little bit more, uh, but it's one of those things where that's how we pay for our services, you know, a lot, a lot. So, thoughts, Casey?
Oh, I guess like why don't we advertise this and say I come to Hazen, you know, and stop by our, and you can buy it, buy a brand new ride, ride my lawnmower. You don't have to pay as much tax or, you know.
Well, you still have to pay it, don't you?
Twenty, after twenty-five dollars. So they can re, get a refund it.
But you pay the full tax and then have to ask for a refund to get over twenty-five dollars. So if you don't tell them, people aren't doing it.
Yeah.
It would, it sounds like we've.
It sounds like a lot of them are.
Yeah.
So if we got rid of the cap, it would benefit the city.
Buster?
I think they, uh, really, I think what the the major players, the big, the people who spend a lot of dollars on purchases are aware of the fact that they can re- request the refund. I think, you know, you and I as John D. Publier, a lot of people probably aren't doing that. Even I know just some comments from some of my board members, you know, they weren't even aware until I brought it to their attention that there is a twenty-five dollar cap and, and that you would have a purchase over that one time, you know, you could, uh, give a time that you could, uh, request a refund, you know, that type of thing. So in terms of, you know, again, I don't know.
Well, the danger is also that we, we could be. Well, the danger is also that we, we can be educated people to, to much have a reverse effect, that's the work we're gonna do.
Well, the next, you know, the thing upon it is, is also that there are things, of course, and you probably recall this story from back when we were trying to do the paint on the rec center. Uh, you know, there are certain items that are exempt, you know, drugs are exempt.
Detention, yeah.
Uh, you know, the car thing that you mentioned, that's actually, uh, SDA tax, not SDA tax, but, uh, excise tax. Excise tax, but, but I think everybody gets the drift in terms of, but the better example is, yeah, you buy a ten thousand dollar worth of, of materials from West Dakota lumber, uh, you're gonna hit the cap and then some. And it's those kinds of folks that are aware of it, I'm sure, and then they ask you to get it back. And then the other, the other downside of it is this, from ACD standpoint, you know, we kind of budget based on those numbers and, and then we, we go, I mean, I don't, we'd have been in kind of a tough spot had we not had a rent coming in from the Congress Center this year, because we went four months without having really any, any income coming through our, into the conference, and, and, so, but, yeah.
I think we really have to be careful how, and do a good thorough job of educating people if it's the direction we wanna go, but it's, it's hurting us right now.
There are a number of town entities that are changing, they're changing their original home rule charter. They've gone from twenty-five to some cases, they've gone to two hundred dollars, I've seen a hundred dollars, I've seen it removed altogether. You know, because, uh, I'm on the listserv, the tax listserv, and, uh, I don't recall exactly how often those notices come out. But once, when that's changed at those different city levels or wherever, then we'd always get a notice, we receive a notice on it so that, because it has to publish it.
It's ninety days before the quarter, is what it is.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Um, so, so it really kind of runs, uh, runs the gap where, where folks are doing.
So, if this is something we wanna do, need to get our ducks in a row, because?
Yeah, because it has to be certified fifty-five days before the election to get on the ballot. I wanna say it's fifty-five or sixty days before the election to get on the ballot, so, ballot is November, November sixth, or the election is November sixth, so.
Okay.
All we're gonna do is ask for the voter.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's up to the community then. So, at the next meeting, we need to decide something we wanna do or not, ask for this. Okay? Any more discussion on that? Okay. All right, and then twelve B, Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal.
You know, as I told you when we were working, when I was working on the budget, we actually had good news from Blue Cross Blue Shield, our, our premiums went down for the next year, effective October first. So, I guess, basically, unless you wanna make any changes to our plan, I would ask for your approval to submit the renewal back to them.
Okay, what was the, what was it going down to?
Just, just under four and a half percent, about four point three percent overall between health, dental, and vision.
Well, I don't think that's gonna happen again next year, so I wouldn't wanna make the change and have to change it back again next year to their plan. So, I would say just a minute, but I think it's.
Motion for that?
Yeah.
Motion to, uh, submit that, okay?
Okay, we have a motion by half. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Pat.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried. Thirteen, approval of bills.
A few more on the bills than today.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Okay.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried. Media adjourned.